John?
All right, how are you?
Hi, John. How are you?
All right, we are ready.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular town council meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2013. Our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Councilor Montanari, can you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Town Clerk?
Councilor Drake is not here yet. Councilor Hurley will be unable to attend. Councilor Kotkin?
Here.
Councilor Menousos?
Here.
Councilor McAllister is not here yet. Councilor Montanari?
Here.
Councilor Roberts?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Consul?
Present.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. First item of business is public comments. We have no hearing items under number two, general comments. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Mr. Miller, then Mr. Colantonio.
John Miller, 45 Holland Street. Mayor, members of council, I see by the papers that you're getting ready to start the high school project, and frankly, I've still got some serious concerns out there. And the more articles I read, the concerns keep building up a little. Now, I think I've made it clear in the past that I think what you're constructing on the north side of the field is you're just looking for future headaches, no doubt costly changes, traffic's going to be a serious problem, but I've made all those points in the past. Now, last year, you went to referendum with the project as you're about to build it, and the voters authorized the 76.8 million. They also, it was clear that you could issue bonds in the amount of the difference between 76.8 and whatever you would receive in grants. I think it was represented to the voters that you anticipated a $30.2 million reimbursement, and therefore, you'd be, we'd be looking at bonding about 44.6 million. Now, that estimate included several items that are 100 percent reimbursable. Some of the reimbursable items are the geothermal project, which was estimated at a million five. The bleachers, the 2,000 additional seats out there, additional, were estimated at 400,000. The roads and parking areas that you'd, would be building, I think it's around 1.7 million. PCBs you had in there had a million dollars. Asbestos, 250,000, and there's certainly others. But, as I understand it, any of the 100 percent reimbursable items really have no impact on the taxpayers. You're going to bond the difference between the, well, the difference between what it costs and what you get back in grants. Now, there's some 50 percent items. You're moving the softball field at 175,000. You're rebuilding the tennis courts at 400,000. Now, those, the taxpayer will be on the hook for half of that, so on the order of $300,000. But, the changes have started. The PCB costs were higher, and I should say, you know, I've heard people upset that the estimates are wrong or the PCB costs are, you can't estimate PCB costs accurately without doing such extensive testing, that it costs you more to do the testing than it's worth. So, I personally don't think there's any fault with whoever did your estimates on the PCBs. But, I have a lot of problem with how we're making up the differences between these costs and what the estimator of the budget was. Immediately, we eliminate these 2,000 bleacher seats. That's a 100 percent item. I mean, they're there for our asking, we need them, and we take them out. It may look on paper to somebody like you're saving a couple hundred thousand dollars, but I don't believe you are. We eliminate the geothermal project, which instantly, I think the committee and the architect did an excellent job of selling of the benefits to the town back, again, this must be a year and a half ago, when they did it. Obviously, the real savings come down the road in a few years, but it's, they certainly made the case that the geothermal project was a good thing. But, now, the latest thing I read, all right, we eliminate the geothermal, so what does it mean? You're going to put in a new HVAC system. Does anybody know the cost? Okay. I don't mean to embarrass anybody. The, it, I know you appropriated 140-some thousand dollars for the design of it. Frankly, I'm not sure, and I don't, I'm really not sure, that whether or not a new HVAC system will cost you more than the million five you're saving by knocking out the geothermal. But, I would think you'd know that, or somebody would know it before you do it, or certainly before we go ahead. The, you know, when we, when I see us knock out the bleachers, just last year, it was, yeah, I think it was last year, when one of the night games, you had an important soccer game with, you were playing, I think it was South Windsor, and the place was full, in fact, people were up on, well, outside the field. We need those 2,000 seats. Why in the world would we not take them? Now, you know, remember when the last renovation, all kinds of discussion on, let's fix the field, let's get it right? There was equal or, there must have been a whisker more opposition to, no, we're not going to do it, we, the committee has set on, this is what we're going to do, and we did it. So, years later, we spent a lot of money, we spent a lot of time, but we eventually did the field. Now, some of the other items that you, I just don't understand that we would be putting them in as a so-called savings. We're going to use a cheaper material, and again, I'm reading what I see printed, so if I'm wrong on something, then somebody can correct me, but I don't have any, what I would call firsthand information. But, you're using the cheaper material for a drain going across the baseball field. Now, for one thing, seldom, when you're trying to save money, you do it with the material. Probably costs, whatever you're doing, putting in that ground, the labor cost's going to be the same thing, whether you're putting in, you know, five-star material or something you can get for nothing. It's a not-a-big item. And furthermore, you know, that drain across the baseball field, assuming it's the one, I think it is, I don't even know why you would replace it. If it flooded around, somewhere around that drain on the baseball field, my feeling would be, so what if it's raining hard enough to cause a flood on that field? One, I don't think there's going to be any damage, and two, it'll be dried up by the time we're going to, going to use it. So, I'd take a look whether you even want to be digging up the baseball field or be doing anything. But, in any event, I, to, you know, post about a savings by going to cheaper material, it's got to be a mistake. I see we're going from a 20-foot fence to an eight-foot fence. I have no idea where you're putting a 20-foot fence. But, if some architect thought we needed a 20-foot fence to do something, you probably do. And to say we're going to have a savings by reducing it to eight, I'd say somebody ought to take a good look at it. I think you'd probably find the architects probably right. Maybe the one that would bother me the most, we're cutting down the thickness of the bituminous material going in your roads and parking lots. And now, again, this is, this is all labor. You've got a town standard, I think the town standard's reasonable. Generally, you build all your roads and lots and everything to the town standard. I don't think that's a reasonable cut. And think, you know, a few years down the road, when you're replacing something, or somebody's in here saying, your maintenance is high, that, the time to think of these things is now, not wait for that day to come. So, I think there's still time to get it right. Fortunately, you haven't put a shovel on the ground, and I think I said at a previous meeting, something's looking after this job. There's, there's, obviously, there's a current out there that would, that would mess it up, but by the same token, there's another current that's holding it up, so it's saying, pleading with you, take a look at it. You might, you know, you might get it right if you look at it. Certainly, some of these questions have been raised. I did hear one answer to some questions, and it was that we can't spend reimbursable money twice. Well, I don't have any problem with that. That's certainly true enough, you can't spend reimbursable money twice. But, by the same token, on some of these items, you can't, you can't get reimbursable money for items you don't do. So, it's, you know, it may be just a play on words, but that's not an explanation for anything we're talking about.
Mr. Miller, can you summarize, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Where was I? All right. I will say, you know, the changes I have made simply, I don't think we, the softball field should stay, the, there's no reason to spend that kind of money moving the tennis courts a side distance, and what you're creating on the north side shouldn't be there. All that parking's going in the wrong place. It's almost like this project was driven by some, I would say relatively small group, has to park closer to the school. So, I did notice on tonight's agenda, item 4C, I think it says, you've got a third-party architectural review of the high school project. If it's not inappropriate, have a third-party review of the site work on that high school project, if it's not included as well. I think there's still time to make substantial improvements, you'll have a better project, less cost, we'll all be happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Colantonio?
Good evening. Yes, Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Guess what? Stop sign. On previous occasion, the town manager has stated that if the side distance on Orchard with Hillcrest met the standard, and there were no history of accidents, then the stop signs on Hillcrest Avenue would be removed, would be removed. On July 20, 2011, the town took measurements for the intersection of that side distance at the intersection and found to be 970 feet to the west and 344 feet to the east. Now, keep this distance in mind, 970 and 344 on Hillcrest Avenue. Based on this measurement, there is no need of these two stop signs. Now, for some unknown reason, the town manager has changed his mind and tells me that the stop signs are not going anyplace, they're going to stay there. And it's okay with me. I don't have any problems with that. The intersection side distance on Orchard and Morrison Avenue looking east is 290 feet, as I said before, and as the, and as the police department has stated, at this intersection, a white picket fence obstructs the sideline, and this is why the stop sign is needed, keep in mind, is needed, and we have 290 feet side distance. On February 12, 2012, the town took a measurement for the intersection side distance on Tifton Road and Morrison Avenue to be 340 feet. And this was before the reconstruction of the sidewalk and before the realignment of the road at this intersection. I took measurements myself after the construction was completed. I found to be 240 feet, and after many complaints, the town took another measurement with different results. Guess what? The intersection side distance at this intersection was measured to be 232 feet. From 340 before construction, it went to 232 feet after construction. At this point, I was told that the measurement that I took using the yardstick was correct, but the original measurements taken by the town was not wrong. Figure that out. I was right, but the town was not wrong. The most unsafe location on Morrison Avenue is between Orchard and Tifton. The sidewalk is adjacent to the road with a mountable curb, curbing, and only two feet separation to the north between the road and sidewalk. During the school year, there are over 45 students crossing in this area on the way to the middle school. Let me state the fact again, one more time, maybe the last, but I don't think so. The Connecticut DOT manual on the intersection side distance shows that the required distance for 25 miles per hour is 280 feet, 25 miles per hour, and that's our posted speed on Morrison Avenue, 25 miles per hour. We need 280 feet. The measured distance taken by the town is 232. And, in addition to that, the 85th percentile on Morrison Avenue, it's 31 miles per hour. So, this intersection is completely unsafe. Now, I would like to know the reason or the excuse why the police department has determined, along with the town officials, that a stop sign will not be installed where needed for safety reason. But, the town will spend $25,000 for replacing many stop signs in town for the upcoming year. By the way, has been also stated before by the town official that half of the stop signs in town are not needed, and yet, we're spending $25,000, or budgeted $25,000, to replace stop signs. The only conclusion that I have is that the town officials are non-responsive and does not care to the fairness, safety, and quality of life of the residents. And I would like to request again, the State Traffic Commission for a second opinion regarding the need of a stop sign for the safety of the pedestrians and the many students walking to the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Coppermill Road. At the last town council meeting several weeks ago, there was a discussion, and I think some days earlier, there was some discussion in this room regarding the old Weathersfield redevelopment, or that study that was going on, and a lot of talk about vibrant activity. Yet, the only thing that I saw that was vibrant was whoever the consultant was that was making $50,000, he's the only one that stepped away in vibrancy. I think the rest of us got hammered, talking about the Comstock Ferry property, the Belden House, the Masonic Hall that was currently on contract, I don't even see why he even wasted his time talking about that. And then, moving a historic house to another location, he was really reaching for straws to come up with to justify his $50,000, $50,000 grant. I hope you don't do any more of these foolish things, Mayor. I think this was extremely foolish on the part of the town council to approve any such money to spend on something such as that. And that's the first time that I've gone to a meeting where you have done a grant, you received a grant, and then you gave a presentation, and so, that's, that's not, I don't think it's wise to spend our money that way, Mayor. It's foolish. And being that it came, it was all free money from the state of Connecticut, that, that rubs more into the wound to us who do pay taxes at the state level and the town level. And it was only not long ago, I had to come down here and make my annual or my semi-annual tax payment, and I'll tell you, it's difficult paying taxes in this town, Mayor, for what we get, for what I get. It's like throwing money in a hole, a big dark hole. I'm sick and tired of it. And then, I watch how you spend money here. You just, what, last Saturday, last week, you, last Tuesday, you had a special meeting for a new radio system, which you, I understand, it passed. That's now called our, and you'll, you'll hear me talk about that from here on in, that's called our now Rhino Townwide Radio System. I don't think we needed it. We bought one 10 years ago. We're still making payments, and we have another 10 years roughly of payments to make on the existing one. If we go back and look at the, some of the words that were said, our assistant town manager had said there's 100,000 of those units out there across the country, yet only Weathersfield doesn't work. Something's wrong. How many times have I searched through the town minutes, town council minutes, looking for discussion on the problem with your radio system? I only found one in the last 10 years, or that's available online, once, and it was called an anomaly that happened. And of course, all our policemen carry cell phones and other kinds of phones along with them anyway, so for an anomaly, we're going to spend whatever this amount of money is? Some, and, you didn't even put it out to bid. Didn't even put it out to bid, and the guy who you hired as a consultant, you've had him on here since 2005, you've paid him roughly 41 million, $41,000 for consulting fees, and he tells you, go buy Harris. But, you didn't put it out to bid, you didn't bring in any, 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 any other options except for what is given to buy Harris. But, this isn't the only reason, or the only issue I have here in this town regarding money. You got $35,000 from ATT for a box to put on the high school property, and all of you voted in favor of giving it to special interests. That money went right out the window. It didn't go into our treasury, like I stood up here and said, it should go into our treasury, and when we need the money, we'll have it. We don't have that money anymore. You gave away 205,000 or 200,000, whatever it was, to the developer on Golf Road to enhance some more special interests. That money just gone. Mr. Colantonio needs, would like to see a sign, a stop sign up on his street, and he's told no. But, we give all this, our town council gives all of this kind of money away to special interests. $75 million now renovation for the high school. And didn't I hear at the last town council meeting that because we're not going to be putting in those wells, we're still have, have the surface or the tennis court, which is going to cost, what, $400,000? And is that reimbursable? Mr. Miller was talking about items being reimbursable. I don't think it is, if I recall correctly. But, we can spend money like it's, like there's no tomorrow. Why? Ah, it's only the taxpayers that have to pay it. You're taxpayers too. You must all be loaded. $800,000 for a, for a fire truck. A fire truck that, oh, we can't get parts for it. But, you go and you buy the stupid, the next stupid fire engine from the same company. You don't buy from them anymore, Mayor. You turn the spigot off, and all the towns turn the spigot off, and make them deliver the products that you need as that fire engine gets older. And the people that are going to end up buying the fire engine from us at a bargain price, they're going to get spare parts. But, our guys, they just can't find them. And then, we go on to so many other things in this town that just had me so aggravated, just so aggravated, how you spend our money. And, and, and Mr. Miller, who was up here talking a few minutes ago about some of the issues at the high school, I haven't made any comments regarding the high school, per se, except for that well business and that resurfacing, because we're going to spend, we're going to spend a tremendous amount of money there, more than what was said. And will it be the product that you said you were going to deliver to these, to the townspeople? I don't think so. You've already gone, you've already lost your thermal wells, people who are all hepped up over that, what are they saying? They're saying, I'm not voting for those people anymore. I'm not voting for anybody anymore. Re-elect nobody. That means go to the polls and do write-in votes, and that's what is going to happen. And I'm going to be talking about that, and I have been talking about that. Vote for nobody. Federal, state, and local. I'm not voting for anybody sitting up here. And again, I'll be putting my signs out regarding vote for nobody. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
This is, this, this town is a real expensive place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Rue?
Now, that's the light, Mr. Speaker. George A. Rue, 956 Cloverdale Circle. I'm going to do something a little unusual tonight, in that I've been away, and I only saw the council meeting this morning, and I couldn't draw all my thoughts together. So, I'm going to try to do it with sketchy notes, extemporaneously, and tax that brain as hard as I can. That's probably good for it. A few things kind of come to mind on the radio system, which is 3.8 million, and everybody agrees, it's a big number. It's a big number. But, what's so unusual about spending $3.8 million in August? That's the normal time to spend a lot of money, because nobody's around, nobody's here to holler at you, nobody's here to complain. That's when we have referenda, so that we get a feel for the populace what they want. And then, we have special meetings. I was a little, I was a bit nonplussed when I heard about the special meeting and you passed that $3.8 million. And I knew when it happened, I heard about that when I was up at the Cape. It just seems to me that what our elected officials are doing is really not in the best interest of this town. And I'm not saying we don't need a radio system, but I'm still not convinced that we have to spend $3.8 million. And I think that was a point that was brought up by Mr. Montanari, and I detected very early on in one of the earlier meetings, a certain level of apprehension on Mr. Montanari's part on $3.8 million. Now, maybe as Mr. Menousis suggested, it's all political. I'm not too sure it is. Maybe it is, but maybe it isn't. But, the remarks dismissing certain things, dismissing concerns, and I'm reading a couple items from the paper, from the current, because I haven't been away, I haven't seen a current. So, it must be an election year? Yeah, so it must be. But, what I read and what I... But what I read and what I hear is people talked about the process was locked in stone. And it was, oh my God, we locked this process in stone, and how dare anybody question it? The question that comes to my mind, if you've got something locked in stone and it's less than the wisest thing to do, I hope you're smart enough to say, "Maybe we've got to change the process." And if you, you think you've convinced me, and I think if talking to a reasonable number of people that $3.8 million is the right number, I think you're very wrong. I think, I, I just get the feeling that we continuously have our priorities mixed up. You don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out that this country's got a lot of problems. Have you seen Time Magazine, "Is the Next City Yours After Detroit?" And if you read the fine print and read the points that are raised and draw analogies to what, what happens on a smaller scale here? It just seems, it seems to me either a lack of wisdom, I hope it's not, we don't give a damn what the citizenry thinks, but at least from the Board of Education, I have the continual feeling that they really don't give a damn what anybody thinks. At least here, you can speak your mind and share some thoughts and encourage you to do the right things. As I watched that program this mo, the program, the council meeting, and I saw most of it, I was having some technical difficulties, of the kind that I predicted that some of our police are going to have with these fancy complicated radios and all that stuff. I couldn't make my damn TV do the right thing, but that's another problem, just a little side comment. I listened to the technical jargon and the technical comment. And I'm an engineer, I've done my share of that, using that kind of stuff in my chosen field as if at an earlier time in my life. And I'm sitting there saying, if these guys really understand that, what's, the answers that are being fed you, I'd be surprised. I hope you do, but in all candor, I don't believe you do. I think you just, just bubbles out, it's spoon-fed. If you had to explain it, I think you'd have a hard time doing it, but that's, again, another problem. The things that I think needed looking at, when you only went to a single vendor, I think the questions you should have been asking yourselves is the interrelationships that existed between staff and the members of this Harris company? Just to make sure there were no untoward relationships that might bias some thinking. I think the last time I said to the, to the council, and it was my thinking, don't have too many lunches with these people, because it confuses your thinking, it introduces bias. So, in any event, it's done. I think Mr. McAllister's making a smart move by not running again, because he'll be safe and sound and you won't be able to blame him. And in the final analysis in five years from now, not a one of you who've made these decisions, the tax, the burden of citizens of this town, will be held accountable for anything, because you won't be here. You won't be here. And in five or six years, when you may have trouble, and I hope you don't, we'll have a new town manager sitting over there, promising all kinds of stuff that he won't be able to deliver on. And the, and the council responding to the community at large, we have to educate these simple folk out there so they understand all this jargon and understand what you're trying to do for us. The key item is the shape that the state is in, our country is in. Nobody expects you not to spend money. But I don't think it's an unreasonable thing to expect our elected officials at the local level to do it wisely. And unfortunately, I wish I could say you have, but I'm sorry to say, I don't believe you did. Right here.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Other members of the public wishing to speak?
Mike Cuddigan, 49 Westbrook Road. Comment about the radio system and how it was chosen. At the last regularly scheduled council meeting, two or three Mondays ago, there was some good material presented, and you guys talked about things quite a bit. My recollection is two other vendors were involved. Marcus, a fairly local company, and another one I can't recall. Yet I discovered at the, the special meeting you held last week, a meeting when public can't speak, suddenly only Harris was, it wasn't even discussed. Apparently, you just chose Harris at that time. I think we need to hear tonight what happened to the other two vendors and why their products were considered not as good as Harris. It may well be valid, but I don't think any of us know what your rationale was. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddigan. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello. Robert Gary, 10 Morrison Avenue. I may be at least one meeting too late for this, I guess I didn't do my homework, but I thought we were talking about changes to the high school project. And I know the site work bid had gone back out, and the other thing I noticed, I, you know, we know that in projects of this size and magnitude, there always have to be changes after the fact, but the one thing I saw that bothered me was that, based on the bid for the site work, there was a decision to reduce the thickness of the asphalt in the, parking lots and roads. And I always think that's kind of short-sighted, because you have the opportunity, when you're doing the project, when the money's bonded, to do the, to do the project right. And there's certain things like landscaping and decorative elements that end up getting cut if there's budget issues, but I think it's very short-sighted to cut the asphalt budget on that. I know it's a bit high, higher than was in the plan. And then since I'm standing here, and I rarely do this, I have to complain about this building again, because this was, in my view, the worst result of a building project, because not only is the building ugly, but it still hasn't been landscaped. And there's that unbelievable atrocity of a HVAC structure out in front that still isn't screened. And we had the money for this giant paver turnaround in front of the building where there's no public access, and there's still no landscaping on this project, and I don't understand it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, we'll move on to council reports. Any reports of committees? Okay, council comments? Councilor Cuckin?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, I got a note from a resident in town who was riding his bike and was going down Knott Street from Ridge, and I think there's, blew out his tire, fortunately it wasn't hurt at all, but it blew out his tire on the downhill side going east off of, on Knott, off of Ridge. And there are a lot of bicyclists out this time of year, I was just wondering if perhaps the town could take a look at that area, just to see if there's any patching we could do to smooth it out. So that was one. The other is, unlike many other residents in town, I'm sure almost all residents in town, I received a letter from the mayor and some instructions on safety tips, which I think was great, I'm glad we sent it out. But I think we got like three copies of it at our house, and I'm sure others got multiple copies. And I was wondering if there's some way we could do some sort of list sorting, it's all mailed off, pre-sort, first class. Maybe in future years, we can do some sort of list sorting so that only one gets, goes to a resident? Because we certainly didn't read it three times.
I got six.
Oh, okay. You got more, you must have more vehicles, John. So I don't know, it's, I know last year, we, we didn't mail it, we mailed it to the mortgage holder, and it didn't get to the residence, so I'm glad it got to the residence, but hopefully we can cut down the duplication next year. That's it.
Thank you. Other council comments? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, on the radio system, just one comment, well, maybe two, but first one is Waterberry, on the news tonight, I didn't have a chance to check this out, but they also implemented a new radio system, and I understand they're already having some issues with this new system. Rayanne, if you can, can you find out who the, who the, do you know who the vendor is for Waterberry? Is it?
I believe it's E.F. Johnson.
If you could just check, because I just want to make sure it's not the vendor we're using. I just, like I said, I didn't have a chance to do that. Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Miller's comments on the, on the building for the high school. I think Mr. Miller is a, he's a longtime resident and a very seasoned engineer. He does have very good, if not excellent, advice. And if I were the head of the building department, or the, or the building committee and the committee itself, I would really reach out to Mr. Miller and his firm. I think he's only trying to do the right thing for the town. He does bring up a lot of questions as far as changes go and structure, structural changes go and landscaping goes. We haven't even put a shovel in the ground yet for this, for the new high school, and our contingency fund is almost one-half used up. So that, that leaves big questions in my mind, we have three years to go on this, and with a contingency of almost a little over $6 million, and I think 2.7 or 2.8 million's already been used in contingency, we're cutting it pretty slim. And I think we're going to run into a lot of difficulty with this high school. I, I for one would like it to come out proper. I think it's going to be, it's not every other council meeting, but I think it's a daily basis that should be looked at, a day-to-day operation as far as this goes. This is a huge project, the biggest one Weathersfield has ever done. And then I think the committee, like I said, should reach out to people such as Mr. Miller and others to get their input, since they have a lot of background, that they're in the business. So I, that's my comment there. Mr. Young, you mentioned about the $50,000 study. I was here that evening when they, when they did the study for Weathersfield, for the old Weathersfield. And I have to say, the person did start out by saying that, if I have my notes correct, it was the first study he's ever done, or one of the only studies ever done, where it wasn't town-owned property, it was privately owned. And once he mentioned that, and I had not known that previous, but once he had mentioned that, I knew that there was, it's a good study, I mean, the guy did his job, but I don't think anything is ever going to come out of this, and I have to agree that, that was a $50,000 grant, and if these people go from grant to grant doing this type of work, they got a pretty good, they got a pretty good, steady income coming in. So, you know, that, the one that got me was trying to move a house that was built back in the 17 or 1800s to another location to, to make a park, just did not make any sense to me at all, but, you know, sometimes who am I, maybe they think I fell off a turnip truck or something, but for what it's worth, I, I also agree that was money not well-spent and probably shouldn't have, the whole thing should have been looked at a little bit different. Mr. Rue, you made a couple of points on town issues and spending that goes on, and one comment you did make was, what's in the best interest of the town? And I have to tell you, all the time I've been sitting on this council, in this seat, I for one am a taxpayer, and I for one try to do the best and look at the best interest of the town, not a special interest group, but what's going to affect the entire town, senior citizens down to children entering, entering first grade, because you're absolutely right. Five or six years from now, 10 years from now, none of us will be sitting here, and who's going to be accountable? And that's something else other people say about, is about accountability. And that, to me, accountability means a lot. I try to be as accountable as possible, and if I make, make a mistake, then it's people like you that have to tell me I made a mistake, and I'll think about it the next time around. So I appreciate your comments on that. As far as the roads go, there is a problem on Knott Street from, from Ridge Road going down. In fact, I got a letter also from the person on, and on a car that actually blew out a tire. Knott Street's been in deplorable condition going down the hill for many years now, and I've, I've also made some comments about that. I've also commented about Ivy Lane where I live, and the street is actually falling apart. I did get a letter from Mr. Turner on, on the, on the VHB database and how that works. But, Mike, thank you for your comments, but it still does not address, you know, what I could tell my neighbors when the street's going to be repaved. And I thought my street was in bad shape, but then I, during my, during my walks, I changed my route a little bit, and I noticed that Crest Street from Cedar Street up the Ridge Road is probably 10 times worse than Ivy Lane, to the point where like, it's, I thought Ivy Lane's road was caving in, Crest Street is like even beyond caving in, so, and, and from what I've looked on the system, there's, there's no, there's no plan of what's going on in Crest Street. So i, if you would please, for maybe the next meeting, if you could address the Ivy Lane issue, but also the Crest Street issue and Knott Street issue, and what we're going to do about that, that, that would be greatly appreciated. Let's see, do I have anything else? Nope, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Other councilors have comments?
No.
Stav, Councilman Manusa.
Thank you. So I want to echo some of what Deputy Mayor Council said about John Miller and a little bit about what Rob Gary had said. Can, you know, considering these increased costs of the project at the, at the high school, and the comments by Mr. Miller and Mr. Gary, I would agree with the suggestion of a third-party review of the site work, in addition to the third-party review of the, the architecture work. This could be done simultaneously, so it does not extend the project timeline any further. I think he's a well-respected engineer whose, whose input could be valuable. And I would like to address some comments that Mr. Young had made, and to some extent, Mr. Rue on the radio system. The, the thought that the radio system was not bid out is completely inaccurate, it's wrong, and it gives the public the wrong impression of what we did here. The project was bid through an RFQ process, and this wasn't something that was done overnight, it wasn't something that was done with no public comment, and it was something that has taken about 18 months from start to finish with a paid consultant, who's an expert in the field, with a town manager, an assistant town manager, that did all their homework, again, with an independent paid consultant. And I would like to, to ask Rayanne to come up here, since there was a comment from the public, from a gentleman in the back, that wanted to know a little bit about the process again, even though we went through it at the last council meeting, I think it, it certainly bears repeating, because it's that important to make sure that, that the story's written properly and the facts are out there to the public. And I know Mr. Comment certainly won't be voting for any of us up here, so I would probably encourage those who support his views to write him in as the candidate. Instead of passing the buck, I'd love to see Mr. Young up here and, and, and he can, he can give us all his input as a counselor. And Mr. Rue had some comments about, you know, who we serve, and it's, it's a little insulting to, to, to hear comments about the decisions we're making up here. We're not up here for instant gratification, we're not going anywhere, I'm certainly not, I was born and raised here, so I plan to, to be here for, for a very long time. I have family with children here, I have a sister who's, and brother-in-law who are empty nesters, I have elderly parents that are here, so every decision I make is not of special interest that people like to throw around just carelessly. It's in the best interest of the town, what I think it is. So if I could, I don't know if this is out of order, but I'd like to ask Rayanne at some point during the meeting, while everybody's here, to review the process that we went through, to, to support this, this radio bid.
Can we do that as an adjunct to your report?
Sure.
Okay. I think we can do that through the town manager's report.
Thank you.
Are there other councilors who have comments? Councilor Roberts?
Yeah, a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Let me start with a question. I happened to be down on the north end of the Silas Dean the other day and saw the new facade for Wang's Chinese Food and the Weathersfield Pawn Shop. Question of the town manager, do they get money from the facade program for that?
I believe so. No.
Oh, okay, because it's absolutely atrocious. Have you seen it?
I probably have, but I haven't.
Okay, well, it's like neon, it's black with neon yellow and white, and, you know, across the street you have the police department, which looks good, it's a great advertisement for the town, and then across the street you have this hideous, hideous facade. So I don't know whether we have some kind of design review committee that should have looked at it, but it's, if anybody hasn't driven down there, it's, it's appalling. That's all I can say. So I don't know if we can do anything about it, but you have to see it, I'm not doing it justice. And if I was the police chief or the, anyone in the police department that was looking out on that site all day, I'd be like fit to be tied. The other thing, we have a group in town, used to be known as the Weathersfield Early Readiness Council, now it's known as Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, which is basically a coalition of volunteers that meet periodically, they've developed a plan to make sure that all children in Weathersfield from birth to eight, eight years are ready for school and able to succeed in school. And they are having a fundraiser called The Perfect Day on August 19th. It's basically a golf tournament at the Weathersfield Country Club, and maybe we can put an announcement in the next manager's report. If anyone wants information, it's, you can go to The Perfect Day Tournament. information, it's, you can go to theperfectdaytournament.org. You can go for dinner, you can go for lunch if you don't play golf. And then just as a follow-up to what Stathie said, if we are to do these extra reviews, you know, hopefully that's not gonna be coming out of the building committee's pocket, because they've had things reviewed, they've had the state reviewed, at the town managers at every meeting, the superintendent of schools is at every meeting, I know Mr. Bushy's at every meeting, I'm not sure about other town staff, but I know Mr. Miller's an engineer, but, you know, engineers differ in their opinions. And, you know, I'll just say that, I don't think the money should be coming out of the town, out of the school budget, or the building committee's budget. And the counselor, Councilman Drake is at the committee also. So there's tons of review, there's a lot of people that are professionals, and like every other profession, not even one agrees whether they're an engineer or not. So I would, I would caution being hasty in trying to micromanage this group.
Thank you. Other councilors? Okay, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. CLMP continues their tree trimming. There's been numerous questions on that, both that they've trimmed a lot and were having trimmed enough. I've spoken to CLMP, and they are planning to be here on the 19th to answer any questions from anyone. We began our process for the visit from Mary Yoshida of Nagayo, he's coming in October. The next meeting will be August 8th at 5:00 PM, for those interested in working on that committee. In a minute, I'll ask Rayanne to come up and talk about the radio system, but in answer to Councilmember Menusus's question, is it the position of the town council to stop at this point and do a review of the site plan? Because you're gonna award bids for the site work on August 19th. And if you're gonna stop, you gotta stop now.
Is that a question for me?
It's a question for anybody.
Okay, so the architecture work that is gonna be...
It's not architecture, it's site work and engineering. You're gonna award that bid on the 19th.
No, but Mr. Miller made reference to a third-party review of the architecture work that's being done now?
That's for the...
That's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, but, so, couldn't we do it simultaneously if it could still keep in the timeline?
It's, it's not, it...
It won't?
It won't.
Then I guess that's something we'd have to consider. I'm just bringing it up for discussion. I think there's some valid points, and especially, you know, the one about the paving, too.
Would it be possible, Stathie, to get those questions presented to the committee to respond to without having to go that step, so at least they answer it?
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's a good alternative.
I might suggest that, let the committee respond to the points. Because I think some of the things that he made reference to, this 100% reimbursement thing, I know that that's more complicated than, than I think John suggested, and I've heard some answers to that posed by some members of the committee that, that were pretty comprehensive in dispelling that concern. But at the same time, he's raising questions that I think the public probably are gonna ask to have an answer to. So I think the committee could respond, and it may satisfy that concern.
Yeah, and, you know, and the one about, you know, now that the geothermal's not gonna be done, why moving the softball field, you know, couldn't you just extend the parking lot, fill in that little dip, and create that? That, you know, that's maybe more of a, I don't know if that's, you know, an engineering question, or, or, you know, why are we moving it? Or why is it being moved? If we could save a lot of money and still keep it and get that additional parking there? I don't know.
Okay. Anything else?
Just if Ms. Palmer wanted to answer those questions.
Good evening. I first want to correct something that's been said repeatedly. The cost of the radio system is $3.5 million, with an additional $100,000 to replace the fire paging system. That's the system that calls out the firefighters should there be a fire call in town. So the total cost of the system with full fire paging replacement is $3.6 million. And in response to Mr. Cuddigan's questions, there were other vendors that were involved. In particular, Cassidian Communications was in fact the very first vendor that the town approached and asked to come in. And it was just about a year ago that we were sitting down with Cassidian Communications, and they were looking at what, what our sites were, what our requirements were, what we were looking for in a radio system, and going back to the performance specifications. They came back with a price that was significantly more than the Harris system. They wanted a $3 million down payment, and then they wanted a payment of roughly, I believe it was around $250,000 to $300,000 a year for 10 years. So that brought the price significantly higher, and that did not include any user equipment or consoles, and it did not include replacing all of the equipment on our towers. So it was a significantly different price and significantly higher. Subsequently, they did come down and include all of that equipment that they didn't include in the first price, but it was still around $6 million a year. That included service, so when you added the service for Harrison, it came to about $4.6, $4.7 million. So we were looking at $4.7 versus $6 million as a pricing. It was determined, but for several reasons, that we had to overcome some serious things. I agree, Mr. Young, we've not said a lot about the radio system not working, and we've had very good reasons for doing that. First and foremost, we tried to keep it running, we didn't want to start a public war with Motorola, we have litigation with Motorola, and we, and we also didn't want to have citizens concerned about their public safety, because we talk about the officer's public safety, but if our officers and firefighters can't respond, then they in fact are not able to keep our public safe. So those were some of the reasons that we didn't make a lot of noise about it. But I will tell you that in the last month, we've lost one of our sites repeatedly, and it's a common occurrence to lose a site. And when we lose a site, we lose communication on one end of town. So, back to the question at hand in terms of what happened. There's been a lot of information put out there about what could be provided and what couldn't be provided. We, 10 years ago, or 12 years ago, the town did a study and made a determination about what type of radio system they wanted to replace their old radio system with. That's what they went out and bought. To replace that system now, it needs to have a very specific set of specifications. It needs to be 800 megahertz trunked, it needs to have smart trunking, which means it needs to have a trunk controller, it needs, it needs to have a controller with brains, it needs to be simulcast, and it needs to be three sites to provide us the coverage. We've looked at what's available on the market. There have been, now Harrison Motorola are the two main systems that do trunked radio and have for the past 12, 15 years. Cassidian is newer to the market, but they have proven equipment out there. Tate, which is, which is the vendor provided, or the, the equipment proposed by the vendor who's been in here at meetings, has not yet built an 800-megahertz simulcast trunked radio system. There is not one single trunked radio system similar to the one that we're asking for that's deployed in the United States. That was one of our criteria, because we've had so much trouble with our existing radio system, we have looked to have the, the vendor that supplies it be able to prove that they've got up and running radio systems. So that's why Tate fell off the grid in terms of being responsible. We have a matrix, we have documentation that these systems were evaluated, that information is available for review if anyone wants to look for it. It was not staff's recommendation that we pursue a system with Motorola. We've had 12 years to fix our existing system, we haven't had it fixed. You know, the staff that I work with on a daily basis at the service, in the service end of it, tried very hard to get this to work, but it's not working. And staff felt that it would not be in the town's best interest to, to put a new investment in the same company that we've had so much trouble with. So Harris has a long reputation, Harris offered a great price comparative to what pricing around us is, and so that was staff's recommendation to go forward. I hope that that's answered the questions. Is there...
So I guess I posed the question to the public.
No, that's, that's it.
Okay, so I do have a question. So this discussion about Marcus Communications, we weren't going to dealers, we were going to manufacturers, right?
Yes, we felt that if we were gonna spend, invest this amount of money into a radio system, that it should go directly to a manufacturer, so that we had the full strength and faith of the company behind it, and that they could secure the performance bonds for the build.
So why do you think there was all this discussion about Marcus Communications?
It's really, that's, this is...
I can't answer that.
You don't know?
No.
We don't have that information.
That may be some good investigative reporting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rayanne.
Just one other thing. On the podium this evening, there was a request for two additional agenda items, it would be introductions of resolutions, so if we could add that...
We're gonna do that.
...to the end of the agenda.
Madam Town Clerk?
I have nothing special to report.
Deputy Mayor?
Okay, I'll interject. Two things, we're going to take the minutes of the regular meeting July 23rd, 2013, and the special meeting July 30th, 2013, off the agenda tonight. We'll have them on for next time. And adding for introduction ordinances, resolutions, and appointments for introduction, Part 5, we're gonna have 5A, Introduction of Fair Housing Resolution, and 5B, Resolution Recommending the Acceptance of an Urban Action Grant Award in the Amount of $500,000, and Authorization for the Town Manager to Fecuate Said Award. I'll do it for next time, correct?
Correct. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to Council Action Number 1B, Appointments to Boards and Commissions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For Municipal Agent for the Elderly, Christine Taylor, Town Employee, 505 Silas Dean Highway, 85, 2013 to 630, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Next on the agenda is Number 4, Bids. Number 4A is a lease-purchase agreement, Award of Lease-Purchase Agreement for the Acquisition of Trucks and Other Fleet Vehicles for Town Operations. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, Motion to Authorize the Town Manager to Negotiate and Execute Lease-Purchase Agreements for Purchase and Delivery of Four Police Interceptors, Four Pickup Vehicles, and for Physical Services, Two Dump Trucks for Physical Services, and One Fire Truck.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. In accordance with the adopted town budget, we anticipated the purchase of these vehicles and the financing thereof. Interim Finance Director Linda Savitsky has bid out the financing for these vehicles and is recommending First Niagara as the finance company. Staff recommends approval. Many of these will be bought off state bid. The fire truck will be bid separately, you'll see a bid specification, and we'll ask for authorized authorization to bid that out. The remaining vehicles will be purchased, as you can see next on the agenda, through state bid prices.
Any questions of the Town Manager?
Just a quick question, how this compares with what we imputed into the budget for the year?
Same thing with the radio system, it slipped slightly, but not significantly.
Okay, so it's in line, maybe a tad over what we had budgeted?
Yeah, just a tad.
Okay, thank you.
Council Roberts?
Just for the public's edification, can you say what fire truck it is, or what firehouse the company's going to?
It's going to, going to two. It's their aerial device, it's 30 years old, so we're taking that offline.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
If I may. Jeff, on these, I know we're leasing, we're putting a whole lease package together, but since these are three different departments in town, should each one be voted on separately, like the police, the, the physical services, and the fire department, broken out individually?
No, it's one master lease, for different terms for each vehicle.
Understand, but I, my question is, say for instance, we don't want to buy the dump trucks for whatever reason, how does, how does the lease, how does that work if we vote not to buy something? So say we want to buy the, the police cruisers, but not the dump trucks, or the dump trucks, police cruisers, not the fire truck. You can't do it the way it's set up right now.
No, because it's all coming out of the CNEF fund, it's all in one pot. We don't pay for them out of individual departments.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with that, but what I'm saying is, if we, if the council chooses, and they probably won't, but if the council chooses not to buy one of these vehicles, how do we, how do we, we just get a lesser lease?
Yes, if, if the separate...
Okay, that's, that's what I was...
Individual leases, right?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Next on the agenda is 4B, Purchase Request, Purchase of Trucks and Other Fleet Vehicles for Town Operations. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to Award Bids for the Purchase of Fleet Vehicles, Crowley Ford for five trucks, four F-350s, and one F-55 in the amount of $169,423. Crowley Ford for an F-350 Natural Gas Van in the amount of $42,000, and a 10-yard maintenance snowplow truck for $227,000.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As we just discussed in the previous agenda item, these were the vehicles to be financed. And as you can see, we're receiving a grant of $50,688 for the, the plow truck. That is a clean energy grant, which gives us that money towards the new, new plow truck, because it's got a cleaner burning engine, less carbon emissions, and so forth and so on. So that comes right off the, the immediate cost of the truck. The return on that is that we have to dispose of, meaning we have to make inoperable the truck we're taking offline, which is a 2019 '99 version, much less efficient. So, and then we got the $12,000, we got the $12,000 grant for the natural gas van. I think those purchases are in keeping with our desire to move to more efficient vehicles, natural gas or cleaner burning diesel engines.
Any questions of the Town Manager? Council Cocken?
So Jeff, we talked a little bit about the, the truck. So the, the state grant is giving us the $50,000 to help cover the $227,000. And I'm assuming that the amount that we would get if we tried to sell that truck would be way, way, way less than, you know, the $50,000 grant?
Absolutely. We've been getting, I don't know, $5,000 or $6,000 for these things.
Okay.
And then they want them, then they want their money back when they take it 10 miles and it doesn't run anymore.
So, so this, I mean, actually, the parallel to this is that the cash for clunkers, right? Because they had...
Oh, yeah.
When the federal government, you had to basically make sure the car would never run, we have to do the same thing with the truck, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Which doesn't negate a scrap value. I mean, as long as the engine doesn't run, but, you know, we can still scrap the body out for metal.
We could collect whatever.
Yeah.
Just a question. Jeff, the, the snowplow, is that, is that a triaxle? Is that what we're getting, another?
10-yard, three-axle, yeah.
Is that a three-axle?
Mm-hmm.
Because I know we needed, we need another one from last year's snowplowing, so that's good, so we'll add to the, we'll be, this will be added to the fleet.
We're taking one offline.
A triaxle's coming offline, and then, no, okay.
Yeah, none of the vehicles you're seeing here is a net gain to the fleet.
Okay.
They're all one-for-one.
Okay, so I know you, during the budget, you had talked about adding another vehicle, or...
Not enough.
Not enough money for this time. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Love to add a driver, too. That'd be nice.
Next year. Well, we got, you had your CDL, won't you?
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, motion carries. Foresee Weathersfield High School Renovation Project Award of Contract for a Third-Party Architectural Review for the Weathersfield High School Renovation Project. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to Award a Contract for a Third-Party Code Review of the Weathersfield High School Renovation Project Plans and Specifications to Perez Associates in the Amount of $48,500.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is a proposal from a third-party, basically code reviewer, of the entire set of plans for Phase 2 of the project, which includes the interior spaces. This is the, this is the heart and soul of the project that needs to be reviewed before the State of Connecticut allows us to bid the project. Ordinarily, we would have let the state review it, but given the timeframe, we used to do the environmental work, and then prepare the plans based upon amendments to the budget for the remediation, in order to stay on schedule, we're recommending we go outside the State of Connecticut to have a third-party do it and submit those comments to the State of Connecticut for their approval. This, we budgeted 10,000 for this. The other 38,500 will come out of the owner's contingency line, which will leave us with roughly 600,000, five dollars, 605,000 left in that contingency line.
And this was a, this was initially put in at the beginning of the project in case the state was not able to review the Phase 1 particulars, correct?
Yes, we had some in the beginning of the project, but the expectation at the beginning of the project is we'd have ample time to have the state review it, not spend the money.
And right now, the state is saying that they would take up to 90 days?
90 days.
Okay.
Which would put us past our start date to stay on schedule.
Okay. Any questions of the Town Manager?
Looking at the, the bid sheet, can you explain, there's a pretty large differential in the cost, and, and I'm wondering, okay. I'm okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
I, I have a quick-
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. Jeff, just to follow up, if I understood what you said, just to clarify, between February and May, we had the delay because of the PCB analysis, so we got behind, weren't ready to present to the state-
Right.
-assumedly. So in February, the Department of Construction Services indicated they would be able to complete the review in 30 days, but in, in May, when we were finally ready to, to submit that because of the delays with the PCB, they indicated they could not. So is there any, I know this may be a rhetorical question, but there's no provision in DCS to accommodate a, I mean, this is a redundant review, I assume. This is a review done by the state, or on behalf of the state, that's already done as part of our architectural services for the project. Assuming this is a requirement of the state to sign off for their-
Yes, they go page by page and review every-
So there's no, there's no provision, given that the cost is now, looks like $50,000 more, or, or $40,000 more if you count in that we had budgeted 10. There's no capacity or provision for, for DCS to accommodate a change in that requirement?
Not that we're aware of.
Has anybody asked that question?
This is a reimbursable expense.
Well, if they had the capability to do it, they wouldn't have told us 90 days.
No, no, I'm not questioning it. I assume they're just busy now.
Right.
We crossed over to a busy period where they just can't promise to get it done, and they understand that it's a, it's a $40,000 additional expense because of that answer to the town.
We didn't specifically tell them the cost. We asked them for the firm's capabilities that bid on this project, and Peers Associates is the only firm of the four that has done these reviews on behalf of the state.
Yeah, I, I wanna say, Mike, I reviewed the backup, and that, that's clear, that your justification for selecting this vendor, given that, and I think Stathie was going down that path, there were some cheaper ones. The, the more expensive one is the only one that's qualified, based on your review. I understand how you got there, even though it was much less expensive, but it seems to me that, like any state agency, it's almost like we're identifying a hardship because of their inability to handle the load and the timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm wondering if there is a, an appeal, if you will, to say, you can't, or, or is it possible for us to move up, as opposed to some other work that maybe isn't under the same timeframe? It's just a concern of mine, but that's not a small-ticket item into, there are some other points made that we're digging into this contingency. We're not even into the first year, and 50 here, 50 there, another 100 there, and next thing you know, we're gonna be having to go back to referendum. So each one of these things adds up, and it just seems like, since it's a requirement, and it is duplication, if I understand it correctly, it required duplication to get the reimbursement, so I follow the procedure, but it's a state agency that maybe that question should be asked. I realize it's up for vote tonight. I wanna delay anything, but it's, it's a little bit frustrating.
Maybe I'm not following.
That was kind of my follow-up. Was, was there something different?
Mike, just go back to what you said there. You're saying the 48,000 is reimbursable, we'll get it back. Is that what you're saying?
We'll get a portion of the pack.
Right, okay. And it's a mandatory review, according to the managers, right up here?
The, the, the plans have to be reviewed for code compliance. Typically, the state will do it if they have the time and the ability. They only have two folks up there that, that do this type of work, just due to retirements and what have you. And they're telling us that they can't start until about 65 days, and it may take up to 90 days for them to complete that review, and that would push our being able, you can't go out to bid with Phase 2 until this review is completed.
So I don't think we really have an option.
Right. Our, our options are either to have the state do it, or to do it locally, which is what we're doing here. This is similar to what we did with the Hamner Fire Alarm Project. We did a local review, but we were able to do that in-house.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with, with Jerry's point. I don't, I don't think it's negotiable in the sense of whether we can get the sign off, but I'm just wondering if the state understood that it's a $40,000 hardship, because they're saying, I can't get to it, if our priority might shift. I mean, I don't know what's on their desk, but-
Well, I think the state is sort of like in the, the state version of sequestration, and I think they just don't have probably, all the, and all the staff, a lot of the staff has been cut in departments, and whoever's left is trying to pick up the slack, and, you know, if there's only a couple people, then, you know, I'm sure every other school district is saying we're a priority, so I, I don't see that we really have an option on this.
So you believe, Mike, that they're the most qualified, and they can get the job done in the timeframe that you need?
They can complete the review within 30 days.
And, and vendor two couldn't do it in 30 days?
Vendor two has never done this type of work before.
Oh, let's go with that one.
But the, but the, the codes that have to be done, are these, these are town codes that have to be met?
No, these are the State of Connecticut Life Safety and Building Codes.
Okay.
So they'll look at handicap ramp slopes, they'll look at door widths, they'll look at fire sprinkler systems.
Right.
Virtually every component of the plan.
But this, I understand what you're saying, but these are codes that our architect is probably aware of, correct? I mean, when they're going to design all this, they're, they're looking at all these codes before they do any design work. Am I correct?
Absolutely. They follow the codes when they do the design, but codes are, are subject to interpretation.
Okay. So, and I, just getting back to Paul's comments, you know, with the codes and all, you know, you're right, it's, it's a hardship, so it's costing, and part of it's reimbursable, but it's, it's, it's a hard, so it's costing the taxpayers of our town more money because the state can't do their job. So getting back, maybe, maybe I'm understanding your question correctly, Paul.
No, it's reimbursable.
Well, only a part of it's reimbursable. A portion's reimbursable, correct? Not the whole thing?
No, the enti-
The entire 48,000?
There's no portion, there's no portion of this project that's 100% reimbursable.
That's what I'm saying, the 48,000-
Yeah. When Mr. Miller spoke earlier and said something is 100% reimbursable, it's reimbursable at the rate that the town gets, 40%, 50%.
Right. But what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, getting back, and if I heard Paul correctly, the 48,500, you know, a portion of that is reimbursable, not the entire 48,500.
That's right.
So it's costing the town additional funds because the state can't do their job. Am I correct?
Right, approximately 24,000.
Right. So, back again, why, why, did we press the state to say it's a hardship to us, as, as Paul said? Did anyone make those calls to the state, and did they just say tough luck?
No. When, when we met with the state, you, you know, they proposed the option to us. They can either, you can either do it on their timeframe-
Right.
-which costs us nothing, or you can pay, pay a licensed professional and, and get it done quicker.
And, and we couldn't call any of our state representatives or senators to put some heat on somebody up in the Capitol, to put heat on these people to do their job? I mean, I don't know. I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, to me, it's like, you know, that's your job, so get it done.
Well, I'm sure every other town is in, that's, has a building project, wants their legislators to put the same amount of pressure on. I mean, it's, you can't, you know, there's limited resources.
There's limited resources everywhere, but it's, it's like, we're being penalized because they can't do their job. That's-
And, and that's right, and, but what's the option for the town? I mean, we've al- My, my understanding is we've already bumped the shovel in the ground till September instead of August, so, you know, now you'll be bumping it in October, November, December, and it's gonna throw the whole project off, so.
I, I'm agreeing, and I'll, I'll have to vote for this. I really don't want to, but, you know, as Paul said, it's 48,000 here, another 50,000 there, another 100,000. We're gonna be looking at huge overruns in this whole project at the rate we're going. All right.
Just as, this isn't a question, but just as, 'cause we've spent so much time on this tonight. You had mentioned, Mayor, at, at a previous meeting, that we were gonna be having a joint meeting with the Building Committee. Do we have a date for that?
I don't believe we have a date yet. That was after the meeting with the state, so-
Okay.
We'll be working to set that up.
At this point, I think we almost need to have them as a standing agenda item at our meeting, so that when these questions come up, and people from the public come in that raise questions, even though they have a communications committee, they have a website, they have everything under the sun, that somebody from the committee could be here to respond, because all of us have frustrations, and all of us have questions, and we're spending a lot of time spinning our wheels, when I'm sure people from the Building Committee could answer our questions in about 30 seconds.
Okay. Councilor Cocken?
A couple of questions. Mike, when do we go out to bid on, this is for Phase 2, you said, right?
This work is for Phase 2.
And when do we go out to bid on Phase 2?
We can't go out until the, the state or this independent consultant blesses these plans and says we're complete with the code, so.
Let's say we approve it tonight.
Right. We're, we're looking at a 30-day review, so we're probably looking at mid-September to go out to bid with Phase 2.
Okay. And when does the Phase 2 work actually begin?
Uh, in October.
Oh, it doesn't, okay.
Oh, yeah, it'll, it'll go right away.
Okay, 'cause I had this perception that the Phase 2 work didn't start until sometime next year.
No.
I thought it was spring or next year, too.
Yeah. No, we'll go, we'll get right into it, because there are things like masonry, for instance, that we'll, the start and clo- you know, by that time, the foundations for the concrete and steel that worked that was awarded a couple weeks ago, those footings and foundations will be in place, so Mason can start-
Oh, okay.
-building enclosures, for instance.
Okay. I think that was the, the disconnect in my mind, 'cause there's some work that doesn't begin, some work, some of Phase 2 work doesn't begin until, like, next summer or something like that.
That's correct.
But you're saying that some of it would begin this fall, if we get through this. And I guess, this is just one little thing on here, but I noticed that, on your little check-the-box, that Peers Associates was the only one that didn't have this non-collusive affidavit, did they?
Yes, we talked, we talked with the, the Finance Office, and that's, that's a form that apparently just got omitted, so we'll just make sure that that gets submitted. That could be waived as an informality in the bid.
But that-
That they haven't colluded with another, any of the other firms to come up with their price.
Okay, but-
Okay. That's, it's more applicable on a bid process, but it wasn't-
But they're gonna sign it, right?
They're gonna sign it.
They did sign.
Oh, they already have signed it, so that's not an issue?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, just one, did Stu's Associates, do they ever do this type of work?
No, they have not.
They have, okay.
No, there was two out-of-state firms that have never, you know, one is a mechanical electrical firm, one designs like fire safety systems. They, again, none of, none of these firms have done this type of work for the state DCS.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. 4D, the Award of the Bid for Pavement Markings. Can I have a motion?
Motion to Award a Bid Re- Motion to Award a Bid Renewal to Atlantic Paving, Pavement Marking, Inc., in the Amount of $34,000 for Repainting of Street Center Lines, Stop Bars, and Other Road Markings in the Amount of $34,000.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is a CROG bid for pavement marking, stop bars, parking lots, and so forth and so on. There's a list in the packet of what we intend to do, and Mr. Turner's here to answer any questions.
Does Counselors have questions? This is the second year of the state bid.
This is the second year of a two-year bid.
And this was within your bu- within the budget?
Yes, it was.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Under Number 5A, we have, we have two ordinances for introduction. One is the Introduction of the Fair Housing Resolution, and the 5B, the Resolution Recommending the Acceptance of an Urban Grant, Action Grant Award in the Amount of $500,000, and Authorization for the Town Manager to Effectuate Said Award. Those will be on the next meeting agenda as a public hearing item. Moving on to, the next item is Public Comments. Are there members of the public, Mr. Clinch?
Jim Clinch, 903 Ridge Road. I didn't intend on talking tonight, but Mr. Meneses raised my antennas when he started to criticize people in the, in the audience about, about what they said. I just wanna point out to, and to the town that you are the tax-and-spend council person on this council. Number one, I paid, I paid this past month five tax bills, and each and every one of them had on road assessment. It's a road tax, and it's your baby. I call it a stat- Stathie tax, that's what I call it. The second thing is, I'm, I'm just pointing out to you that you're wrong, that these people are right in the-
You love to throw darts and then leave.
Pardon?
You love to throw darts and then leave the room, don't you?
No, I'm not leaving, I'm not leaving.
That's what you do.
No.
Mr. Meneses?
But, and the other thing is, that you were one of the leaders in the Wilkis Farm. I, I happened to drive by today, and I seen what a great job the guy's doing down there. He paid 210,000 for that. You chose to give that 210,000 to the builder up on, now a builder, when he builds a house for 500,000, he, he jumps for joy if he can get 10%. So that's 50,000. And he was gonna build, I don't know whether it was three or four houses up there. He didn't build a thing up there, and he got 220,000 from you, your, your leadership, because you were the, you and Mr. Drake were the two people that, that proposed that whole proposal, when you wanted to build soccer fields up on, on the Wilkis Farm. I was here, I was here at the meeting.
If you want me to explain, I will.
No.
You know, and, so I just wanna point out to the town that you are the big spender in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clinch. Mr. Gary?
Robert Gary, 10 Morrison Avenue. Just quickly on my earlier comment, I know we had discussions about third-party review and all that, but I just wanna impress upon you, while I would rarely encourage you to spend more money, we know that in certain circumstances, when you don't spend it upfront, it costs you more in the long run, and to reduce the thickness of the asphalt is very short-sighted. You know, we had three comments to Mr. Turner earlier about three failed roads in one neighborhood, and that's because we've never adequately funded road paving in this town prior to having this special assessment, which I hope is adequate, and which I hope doesn't get diverted like state highway money. But, that being said, it's critically important that you find the money to make sure that the pavement's done right. You won't have the money to do it 10 years down the road in your capital budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Other members of the public, Mr. Rue?
Rob, you like the Stathie tax, huh?
He's there. Georgie Rue, 95, oh, Georgie Rue, 956 Cloverdale Circle. I still think this is the best show in town on Monday nights.
Better than American Time?
I, I like to see our democratic process in action. I mean, it really, I mean, I don't know it always works, and it's, and, and when you get criticized, and when people don't have confidence, I, I think, there was something I jotted down, some remark Ray had made, the problem of lack of confidence. It's a perception on the part of people, as they look at government in general, right across the board, you, none of you, nobody gets good grades, so you suffer with, because of what your friends are doing. So get used to the idea. But Stasis, again, just because you did all this work, and you talked about all the work you did.
I didn't do it all, I mean-
You talk about, everybody worked hard, you worked hard, that's the way I heard it. Well, with you, or everybody, somebody worked hard. I felt it was you. Seems to me you always wanna work hard, and that's good, I encourage that. And you use the words, it's insulting to be criticized. Well, that's tough. The, as Mr. Clinch just said, you work for us, and if you can't stand the heat, and can't recognize, well, maybe because of perceptions, or whatever the public seems to think, then get out of the kitchen. That would be my advice to you. I know it's a tough job, you know, nobody likes it, but You know, nobody likes it, but that's the way it is. And it's part of the way our system works. But I think what happens with government, they seem to think they're little kings. They think the public has to be at their beck and call. And that's an attitudinal thing. It's an attitudinal thing that goes through our whole system. And I'm sorry for your... I'm sorry you're insulted, if you're in, but that's tough. A couple of other things come to my attention. The little things in life. Sometimes I get down halfway through this agenda here, and I'm looking for all of this stuff, and I'm looking at the back and front, and-
Not copyright.
I'm saying the little things go wrong. The little things, like trying to send an email out. I hope most of you got that I sent out last week. But it took about fourteen tries on my part because all of the email addresses in the town calendar were wrong. And I don't know how I found out. I think I found... I came across somebody's business card, and I said, "How come that's different than what's in the book?" So you say to yourself, "Why can't these little things be done right?" And then we, as citizens, are supposed to have confidence that you can spend million-dollar projects right? Do them right? That gets to be a problem. And again, to Mr. Clinch's comment, saying to Mr. Clinch, "You want to throw darts and bug off", I think you're out of line. I really do. And I think you ought to apologize to him. It's my opinion. One or two other things. I hit that one. Oh, our pond. We spent a lot of money tonight. I say "our pond". Yeah, it is. It is our pond, but it's your property. And we could spend thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, and we get grants for this stat and the next thing, and yet we can't get any money because we're so poor. And we probably are, but you can get it for other purposes. Maybe that pond ought to get a little attention. It's a health hazard. Did Sally Katz leave? I think she did. My wife looked out of the window a couple of weeks back and said, "Hey, who's that lady and that guy out there? They were looking at the pond." And I said, "Well, maybe Sally's trying to find out how bad it is." Well, maybe she came to the conclusion that it is very bad. But it's a health hazard. It's a site hazard. It's in violation of practically everything that's supposed to be part of your blight ordinance. But it just goes on and on and on. Now, I'm not quite as persistent or as tenacious as Gus here. I could give you a little breathing space in between and hope that you'd do something. And I think you want to do something for the citizens of this town? And it's not me. It's not my property, but it has a negative effect on me and all the people around us. And that nobody can get off it. And I know the manager looks a little bored with it right now. He's heard it all before, but you're going to hear it again. It's got to be done. You've got to do these kinds of things. And that's part of the citizen's role in this country. The citizen's role is to keep everybody, all of our politicians' feet to the fire. And I'm a firm believer that that's a good task for us citizens. And I'd like to continue doing that as much as I can with a little bit of a smile and a little bit of fun. And hopefully, hopefully, that whether it's soft or harsh, that maybe you hear it. Have a good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Other members? Mr. Colantonio?
Good evening again. Gus Colantonio, sixteen Morrison Avenue. At a budget meeting, the town presented a graph showing the mill rate for a period of ten years or so. And every year, the mill rate went up, except for the year of reevaluation. It makes sense, I guess. You know, reevaluation goes up, the mill rate doesn't need to go up. The mill rate after reevaluation went down, but the taxes still went up. Think about it. The taxes have increased during the worst recession since the Depression. I remember during tough times, when I used to work for a living. I still work now, but I don't get paid. Recession in the economy, I did not receive a raise for a couple of years. Yet the town receives an increase every year, no matter what, with little or no accountability at all. I was at a local paint supply store in town and overheard the conversation of a gentleman proud of his son buying a house. The clerk asked the question, "Did he buy in Wettersfield?" His reply, "In Wettersfield? Are you kidding me? Taxes are so high, people are leaving the town every time they have a chance." That bothered me a little bit. With that in mind, I believe that no elected official has done his job regarding holding the line on the taxes increases. You know, I do not mind paying taxes for town improvements. But when eighty-two percent of the Board of Education budget goes to teachers and not the kids, eighty-two percent, and it's eighty-two cents out of every dollar goes to teachers, or town employees receiving raises when many people in town are struggling to meet expenses, it is time to get rid of the unions, and it's time for town officials to manage the town as if it were a private business. Now, a couple of years ago, I remember making some comments regarding the intersection of Silas Dean and one seventy-five, handicap ramps. I know that Silas Dean is not a town road. It's a state road. But they have three handicap ramps. Well, they have four, but in one direction it's missing. You can cross one seventy-five on both sides, and you can cross Silas Dean on the south side. But there is a handicap ramp missing on the north side of Silas Dean, northwest side of Silas Dean. I did ask it. I think the least we could do it is ask the state, because it's a state job. It's a state highway, to come and put a ramp there, especially a couple of years ago when they were working there. That's one thing. Another comment that I made a couple of years ago was on Church Street and Main Street. Now, if you go in the morning where the pizzeria, it's not open there, it's no problem. But if you go there in five, six o'clock at night, when all the parking, it's really occupied, and you approaching Main Street from Church, it's a problem. It's a sight problem there, and something is going to happen. The stop sign, it's set up too far in. In other words, you cannot see the cars coming. And yet, you know, you've got to cross it. By the time you move up, you're in the middle of the road. You don't even know what to do anymore. I mean, that's a problem. Is anything getting done? Is it being addressed? Have they asked questions at all? No. And the lighter note of things, I guess, I would have to say that I appreciate that the speed limit signs on Walker Hill Road have been changed to match Silas Dean. I would have gone to twenty miles per hour, but twenty-five, it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Young?
Good evening. Robert Young, twenty, Copper Mill Road. This evening during your counselor discussion, I felt I was on the other side of the confessional listening to the sins being presented as, "I didn't do this wrong, and I didn't do that wrong." Putting out the radio system... The radio system, I said, was not put out to bid is because I read that in the Hartford Current. I wish Mr. Christopher Hoffman was here at the moment, but it was in the newspaper. It was mentioned that town council members come up... Are here to serve equally across the board to the citizens, and that they don't serve special interests, I believe, is a bunch of nonsense. Go back and look at that Wilkes Farm situation, the two hundred thousand or whatever those dollars were. Go back and look at the discussion regarding putting a soccer field on Wilkes Farm. That was all of you who were in favor of doing that. Another special interest. Think about that ATT box that I keep talking about. I know you tell me I'm wrong. They were not your... You didn't give that money away to your special interests. I know you're saying that to yourself, but from where I stood here at the podium and where I sit out there, I see a lot of things going on that are wrong. And you sit here and tell me that you don't serve special interests. What a bunch. I'd like to go on and tell you some things that I read in a paper recently from the Hartford Current. And it was about the budget up in Hartford. And it said, and it was Dan Hard that put this out, and he said, "Malloy's budget increased taxes on more than fifty items in different categories, including charging tax-free items such as non-prescription drugs, clothing and shoes under fifty dollars, pet grooming, automobile towing, manicures and pedicures. Tax on retail sales increased to six point three five percent, while the maximum rate on state income tax increased to six point seven percent for those in the higher tax brackets." Now, we find that even the rotten recent past was worse than we thought earlier. That means, according to the latest Yukon forecast, another two years of lousy gains. This was just in the paper last month. The recession knocked off nearly nine percent off Connecticut's overall economic output, not three percent, as previously thought, according to the U.S. Department of Labor revision cited in a new reforecast by Connecticut Center for Economic Analysis at the University of Connecticut. The state downturn started in two thousand seven, not two thousand eight, and it lasted until the end of two thousand nine, not in the middle of that that we now learn. But we're still in big trouble. The results, three years later, Connecticut is eleven percent smaller economically than we were measured by total output of goods and services. We shrunk. I've been standing here saying you should be reducing your budgets. The whole darn... The whole state has been shrinking, and you didn't pay any attention to this.
Mr. Young, can you summarize, please?
Yes, I'll wrap it up, Mayor. Connecticut prices are the highest, the fourth-highest average for regular gasoline in the country after Hawaii, Alaska, and California, according to AAA. Connecticut's highest recorded average for gasoline was four dollars and thirty-nine cents, set in July ninth, two thousand eight. The highest recorded average in the U.S. is four dollars and eleven cents as of July seventeenth, two thousand eight. And currently, we're paying three dollars and ninety-plus cents per gallon for gasoline. And of course, our unemployment, where is it today? It ticked up another notch-
Mr. Young?
...on our citizens in this state. You need to reduce, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Can I have a motion to go in?
Madam Mayor, before we do that, would it be possible to add on the next agenda an update about that pond? Because I went over there the other day, and you can't even see the water anymore. So whatever's going on with it, we're waiting for whatever. If we could have an update from staff next time?
Just wait for the money.
Well, there'll be no pond by the time the money comes in. Is there an estimated time?
The issue is there's higher priorities in terms of flooding in neighborhoods for drainage projects. This one, it's aesthetically poor, but it's not impacting adjacent property other than aesthetics. So we have problems like on... Name the three we did this year that were actually flooding neighborhoods. Right. Trivet. Those actually impacted water in the houses. So that's where our focus has been on drainage projects.
Is there any way we can just... We could even, like, cut some of the stuff back? I mean, it's like an overgrown jungle.
We can ask physical services to do some work out there, but it needs to be dredged.
Right.
I mean, if we're going to do it, it's going to cost a lot of money.
Right. But it's gotten, just from every once in a while I go by, it's gotten noticeably worse, so...
I would add Murphy Pond to that also, if we can get an update. One or two.
Okay. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for legal matters?
It's all moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Are we staying here? No, we're going in the other room.